Kavanaugh.
Here.
Supervisor Mike Goodman.
Mike Goodman.
Okay. All right, so we've got two issues that we want to talk about today that we wanted to wait until all the elections were basically finished. And a lot of this needs to be talked about in the open, a lot of speculation behind the scenes and what happened and where and how should it be and what's really going on. So, the first one was a decision made by previous board in, what, 2020? Is that when we changed? Or was it 16?
The original move from, to put it under the recorder's office was clear back in 13.
13. So, and remember, this is a work session, this is not a regular session, so we will have just a lot of open dialogue and discussion as if we're having just a conversation. And, you know, the elections were always under the recorder, and then there were some decisions, and since Goodman and Miller were both on the board, we'll see what led to that decision. But when you look at the, and we did have problems in our primary with people that weren't able to vote because information wasn't shared. Once some folks left, they didn't really pass on what needed to happen. And it was all because of those decisions way back when, but we're not really blaming anybody, but that really did happen. And now we've arrived at where we are, and we've got an elections director and a recorder. And how can we make this better? How can we make them all meld together with a better system than we've had before? So, Mr. Miller, tell us, how did we get to where we are right now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and kind of give it that 30,000-foot level, and there's two gentlemen sitting over there that if I get something way off, let me know. But there was a point, like I said, just after 2013, when we all took office, the recorder had moved, had brought the elections under the recorder's office with, at that time. It was probably in that structure for two to three years, not real sure, but I think by the next election. She didn't have the staff, we felt like it wasn't that efficient at that time, and so we wanted to revamp it. So then we separated the elections from the recorder's office, and it ran on a, as a separate entity, under the county manager.
And I might insert in between as if we're doing an investigation.
Yeah, sure.
And Chris Keller, other counties, Maricopa County in particular, it still is under the recorder. The recorder does all of the elections, correct?
Not all of the elections. They have a special agreement, a different agreement, let me say, I shouldn't say special, a different agreement in Maricopa County as to who has responsibilities over what portions of the elections. And they work very much like a hand in glove with the board of supervisors, still having authority over various portions that they are responsible for. And I believe Kent's going to, you know, elaborate a little bit more about some of that. And it's kind of a hybrid, a few counties do it jointly, and several counties also keep it separate. One of the other reasons, you know, because I was here at that time, I had just started with the county in '23, when Virginia also took office, and the decision was to move elections under her, because also at that time, we were losing the elections director. I can't remember who the gentleman was.
Right, right.
But he was retiring and moving on, and so it was decided that we needed to do something, and Virginia, you know, stepped up and said she was willing to take that on and do that. After about three years, you know, and one election at least going through there, maybe more, it was decided that, hey, this is taking a heck of a lot of my responsibility away from what I'm also required to do as the recorder's office, not having enough staff, enough other things going on at the same time. And if you recall, we also had a fire that burned down the election warehouse, and that, you know, on top of everything, was just decided that shortly thereafter that it needed to be more separated, because it needed to have some more eyes on it, some more responsibility, and someone who could spend more time on that. And that is when, and I think is pretty close to when, we started bringing in Michelle Forney at that point in time, again, year three, four, somewhere right around there, to come in. And she was working with Virginia at the same time. So, that was my recollection.
And so what you're saying is, it is county by county, and it is their prerogative. So, we could come out of this with the best system in the whole state, maybe we can be the envy of them. So that would be our goal up here, and be all transparent and open about it. So, Steve, continue on with where we, how we got here.
I was just getting to the fire. Because, yeah, let's make a difficult situation more difficult by burning the building down, which sent everything into a tailspin. But from there, after we brought it back underneath the county manager's office, you know, we went back through the restructuring. And I, you know, and I'd be perfectly honest, I mean, everything was moving, and, you know, whether departments had enough staff to handle this, or they didn't have enough staff, we always had, I think, a staffing issue pretty much the whole time going through this. So, when Michelle Forte had taken place, or taken that office, I think, did she do two elections? I'm thinking she did two elections. And she decided to move on, she found another job someplace else. And we've had a difficult time really kind of taking that elections department and firming it up to where it had some leadership and some real direction. So, I'm open to any and all suggestions at this point in time. As Mr. Keller had mentioned, there's a lot of hybrids, there's a lot of different arrangements that are made from county to county, and I think it does have to do with staffing, and it does have to do with facilities and operations. So, unless there's more detail, and I know Chris may have more detail.
And one other scenario, not scenario, one other factor is the number of voters. I mean, in smaller counties, it's easier to do things more jointly than it is when you, your voter base, registered voters start to increase. And that's the scenario that I think you're facing now with Pinal County, exponentially going up each year, 10%, 20% in the number of voters, even 30, I've heard, 30% increases, you know, with our population base and so forth. So, it's a lot different in scenarios where there is a smaller voter base in those counties, that they can operate differently.
So, that's how we got here, and if you remember, back after our primary, which we did drop the ball on in a lot of ways, people wanted heads to roll right then. And we stood back and took a sigh, and then we said, we will look into everything, and this meeting today is a, you know, of the results of looking into everything still, because we promised we were going to look into this. One person did end up being let go, and had things been handed down differently, perhaps he, they could have done the job. But, you know, we've all, anybody that's had a lot of work experience, you always know this one person, say, this place, if I ever leave, this whole place will shut down, because nobody else knows this. And that's never true, nothing does shut down, but sometimes there are bumps in the road where you have to pick it up. And that's what happened at the time, because, you know, they didn't really have all the information needed. So, we want to hear from Attorney Volkmer and Dana Lewis and Jerry on everything, on how their departments are now, and any ideas on how we can do this better. And then, this discussion's going to lead into the next discussion about us certifying and being forced to certify, et cetera. So, let's get this all under there first.
Chair, Ken Volkmer, Pinal County Attorney. I'm going to beg some indulgences. I want to answer that question, but I want to get into that certification, because unfortunately I have a flight to catch. So, I'm going to ask you if you're willing to go a little bit out of order, but there's one piece of information that I think it's very important, and it's hot off the presses. In fact, I'm not even sure if the board's aware of it. But I believe it was just yesterday or two days ago, the Arizona Attorney General filed lawsuit against Cochise County. So, Cochise County voted last week to consolidate all services under the county recorder. All election services are going under the county recorder, basically just took everything they had as responsibility, placed it under the recorder. Recorder David Stevens said, I'm happy to do it, I understand the way it works, and I can handle it. Board said, great, it's yours. The AG stepped in and said, you know, if you watch Lee Corso, not so fast. They said, you can't just carte blanche give them everything. There is some limitations, there's specific services that you are not allowed to outsource. So that's in litigation. I only bring that up to the board, I know this is a work session, there are going to be no firm decisions made today, but realize that potentially in the next two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, there could be some additional guidance, because my understanding from the AG's complaint, they're not saying that you can't move a lot of those obligations over there, but it can't be the board essentially giving all of that authority away. That is, and they're alleging that statutorily, they don't have the authority to do it. And as much as this pains me, they actually cited our RTA case and the rulings in the Van Gilder matter as the legal basis to say, you don't have the authority to create your own law, you have to follow our law, see Van Gilder. So, just realize that this is an emerging area. By contrast, Yuma County has recently transferred their services to their recorder, but they did it in a manner that I believe the AG found to be legally permissible. So they have not intervened, they have not filed a lawsuit. So what we're getting is we're getting sort of the gutters, if you think about bowling, we're getting the gutter set up, and we have to play in between those lanes. So, this is evolving, I just want to make sure the board is aware of that.
Can you give us some time on when you have to drop dead leave?
To make my flight, I got till 9:45.
And it's only...
About half an hour.
Okay. So I think we can get all this in, because, you know, this attorney general that we have, who ended up winning by 200 and some votes in the whole state, that's obviously her personality and her opinion that's looking into things that wouldn't be otherwise, and I think there is an agenda there to try to bury things one way or the other, and both sides do that. So, I'm going to bite my inner lip when I talk about that, because that, she obviously is going after people to try to teach somebody a lesson when perhaps there's not a lesson to be taught there, let's just let it all play out, and be more open about it. They're still suppressing and stifling everything. If everything gets out there in the open, we're not at this point, but both sides try to bury things, let's be open about everything. So, so let's go back to where we are, we still have you for another 30 minutes.
Absolutely.
And then we'll go into that discussion, because I've talked to, I talked to three other counties and what they're doing, and they're very pleased that we're having this discussion about being forced to certify under the threat of being removed from office and being jailed, and what if it gets worse? And we missed the deadline to have any legislation put through this year, but by next year, perhaps we can come up with something to, so that's going to come in a little bit. So let's go back to our organization on how it could be run, and like I said, I want to hear from everyone.
Real quick, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
But the reason for the lawsuit in Cochise was that the board ceded all their authority over to the recorder and didn't maintain their authority, is that pretty much in a nutshell?
Yes, absolutely. They're saying certain functions can be ceded, but all functions can't. For example, drawing, precincts, all of those things that are statutorily compelled and found in, I believe it's 11251, I think is where all your statutory duties are located. If it's found in that 11251, you cannot just give that to another constitutionally elected officer. She uses analogy, the sheriff can't say, hey, assessor, I want you to make arrests, and the assessor can't go to the sheriff and say, hey, I want you to start valuing properties. You have your constitutionally obligated duties, and those duties that are specifically prescribed, you must do those. You can potentially hire somebody to help you with them, but you cannot just whole-cloth cede them to another constitutionally elected officer.
What I'm hearing is follow the law. That's, okay, thank you.
Okay, so...
I'm not sure how you want to go forward, Chair. Do you want me to address something further, or do you want to bring up Dana?
I would like to talk with Dana and Jerry, and then want to address later on, you know, can we be removed from office and jailed for following our heart? So...
I'll preview it, yes.
Well, that needs to change, which is why we're meeting as well also, and we want the legislature to be paying attention to this, and because we have to follow the law, we would like the law changed, because what happens if the election is just totally, I mean, the other ones have had some, you know, some hiccups, what if it's terrible, terrible, and they're still going to force us to certify it under these threats? And that's what we would like the legislature to look into and change. So, I'd like to hear from Dana, who, you've worked in both offices, so you're going to have some historic background and some input.
Chairman, sir.
And another, and I want to interrupt one more time, I'm sorry, we're rushing because of Kent, so. People are always asking us, can we look into all the voter rolls every six months, every year? And so that's another thing, that needs to be looked at down the road, and these two offices would do that if it needs to be done, so go ahead, I won't interrupt you again.
Chairman, sir, members of the board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder. I am open for a Q and A, or I can go off of where we are, where we were, and where we're going. Would you like me to start there? Okay.
Yes.
So, where we were, the recorder's office entered the 2022 midterm elections humbly, knowing that we'd made strides in securing ballot drop boxes with cameras to deter tomfoolery and the newly acquired GPS locking ballot courier boxes, and departed disappointed, poorly executed primary election due to the loss of institutional knowledge and the inability to certify and train staff during even numbered years. To the general election, we hit the ground running, identifying every hole, then work with every department in the county who could come to our aid to ensure that the gaps were filled and the same errors were not repeated in the general election. Where we are, can't stop, won't stop, our department works tirelessly. Some key points to note, accountability is a repeated pattern of verifying that expectations are turning into results. Accountability is not just a one-time thing, it must be consistent, it isn't spontaneous, you must have a plan, and in a pattern with routine. Update of all desktop procedures, and to ensure that systems that feed information laterally, Avid, E-Pulse, Eric, have the staff that's been cross-trained, so no single point of failure occurs. We field public records requests on the daily. This range is so broad that it would be hard to capture all of the different public records requests that we do receive in the recorder's office. We update voter registration rolls daily, it does not occur annually, it doesn't occur every six months or every quarter, this is something that is accomplished daily. We send out letters to capture updated known what signatures for confirmations and comparisons when accomplishing the early voting signature verification. To let you know, after this last election, several thousand registrants fell off due to the inactivity from previous elections, that was something that had passed in the 52nd legislature.
And that was in how many years until they fell off?
The new statute requires that it be after two general election sections, so it's like right after four years that that occurs.
Four years, they're dropping off automatically?
Mm-hmm.
And I think in some parts of the county that, or of the country, that doesn't happen, and there are voters that are way back that should have been removed, so they're, kind of get removed automatically?
That's correct, and there is current legislation to expedite that as well, and we can talk about that also. We elevate concerns to the Pinal County Attorney's Office regarding third-party voter registration groups and those concerns. I actually had a conversation with Attorney, County Attorney Volkmer yesterday in regards to some of the things we've seen. We unfortunately get the calls from, you know, residents of assisted living facilities that receive documentation that looked like a ballot, and, you know, some of the scheming that occurs, because elections are sensitive to us. So having to take that information and elevate it to the attorney's office, and so that sheriffs can do the investigations that need to occur, so that we can rectify those situations. We just recently completed the federal Eves report, and that was submitted to the Arizona Secretary of State's office for their portion on the 28th of February. We accomplished market study adjustments, this allowed our department for entry-level positions to receive an increase in pay, this again bolstering the institutional knowledge that we need to keep in that department. Met with the Arizona Secretary of State yesterday, we were able to recognize the Pinal team and to discuss the logistically launch of successful elections to voice concerns that we have about Avid and Eric. The EPM, which is the Elections Procedures Manual, we've just recently received our updated drafts and are working as recorders and election officials to have input into that. Additionally, certification training, I'll be working with a team of recorders and election officials from the point of view of Pinal County to help get certification training for all future certified election officials for the state of Arizona. And if you didn't hear on the news this morning as you were coming in, we worked tirelessly since February to work on signature verification and submitted that information to the Secretary of State's office the 2nd of March, and the No Labels party is now a recognized party in the state of Arizona. And that is accomplished, because they do the signature petitions, they get those out there, and then those come into the recorder's office for verification of those signatures, and then we elevate that back to the Secretary of State's office. Where we're going, well, watching legislation, having active input, and being ready to implement changes that are mandated to stay compliant in our positions. We have voter education working groups, meetings that are going to start the 17th of March, the chairs were contacted, asking them to bring people to the table, hopefully identified under each member of the BOS for a lib, a rep, and a dem, and this way we can have those conversations, talk about vendor relations, talk about contracts, talk about the technology that's evolving in our world. People need to feel comfortable with those things. They also sometimes in these large groups don't feel comfortable asking questions. So I need a little one-on-one with those people and with our staff, so they can ask questions, so we can explain in more detail what we do to clean up the voter rolls, what voter registration looks like out in the field, how we can help them be better PCs. We have those conversations, and we'll start that on the 17th. The recorder's office is working to ensure Avid training for the elections department, our first session will be March 21st with them. And then finally, we have multiple voter outreach events scheduled just for the month of March. We're going to try to hit March, April, and May really hard. We have a November election, so I don't know how many boots on the ground we'll have out in October when the weather is nice again. And then we have a PPE election, the Presidential Preference Election, so our ability to be out in the community is diminished. So, we've got about six months to get a lot of work done. You know, it's been awesome to have the elections department staff out with our people in the field, recruiting people for poll worker training, we're able to partner with them on that, and I'm looking forward to that partnership. Robin Sharma had said, it changes really hard at first, it's messy in the middle, but it's gorgeous at the end, and that's where I'm going to leave this.
Okay, so, the term ballot harvesting has been thrown around a lot, some states it seems perfectly legal, others it may be illegal. But what's come up now is that both parties are going to, you know, very vigorously go after legal ballot harvesting on both sides. So that's another thing that we'll need to be watching, are they pushing the limits, staying within the bounds? Before we bring Jerry up, does anyone else have any questions for Dana, and you guys on the phone too?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, go ahead.
This is Supervisor Kavanaugh, we were talking about, I've heard about how bad the primary election was, but the general election was not without error, and I'm wondering, you know, what, it looks like we're leaning towards putting this back under the recorder's office, and I'm wondering what Dana Lewis can tell us about the errors that were made in the general, and some of the things that have been addressed in an effort to fix those really big errors that occurred during the general.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, Dana Lewis, Recorder. What I can tell you is that we found out when the canvas certification documents went forth, I was able to see those afterwards and identified that the numbers of early ballots that had been submitted to the elections department and what they had reported for tabulation was off by 50. To me, even, you know, a few was a question for concern, because then I needed to go back and look at our audit trail and look at our chain of custody. What we were able to find out, due to a discrepancy in formulation of the development of the Avid system in its initial, when it was initially put in place, some aspects were not solid, and so luckily, we were able to fix that with the development team and the vendors, so that the 50 that fell off, and get those 50 voters their voter history, because those ballots did go over to the elections department, I just didn't show it on my end from my reports. So what we were able to do is go through every single, over 1,500 batches from the early voting department, went over to the elections department, and that was almost 110,000 ballots. We were able to go through line by line and confirm that we had voter history for 100, almost 110,000 voters in Pinal County, and we did that with due diligence, a lot of man-hours, and people who care about the process and wanting to get to the bottom, well, what happened? And then working with our developers to make sure that that never happened again, because all it was, was it was a human error. Them trying to fix something in a naming convention created a deletion of voter history, because there wasn't a backstop for that process. So by us elevating that information to the Secretary of State's office, Avid team and their vendors, we were able to rectify that so that it never happened again in any other county.
Okay, thank you. And then I recall that there was an error of between 400 and 600, which is now at issue in the attorney general's race, and what, outside those 50, what caused that, and how are you going to fix that if you're, if this is put under your department?
So the 50 was, Supervisor Kavanaugh, Dana Lewis, the 50 was not about the ballots not going to the elections department, they did. My responsibility as the recorder is to ensure that the voter history for those voters is recorded, and that's what I needed to get back and make sure was accomplished. That's what we were able to rectify on the recorder's office side of things. If we're talking about the recount and that issue, I would have to defer to Jerry on that. I was part of that process at the end as the recorder, and I think it would be best asked for the board to hear from Jerry, Jerry Rolle, the elections director, in regard to that situation.
Okay, we'll look to Jerry Rolle for the answer, thank you.
So in an effort to keep it moving and catch Kent before he leaves, let's have Jerry, do you have anything to add on, now that you've got some experience there, you've gone through an election? Possibly, yeah, because then we can talk it over with the county manager, and if we want to go change something. So, let's go into the forced certification then, and then we'll come back to that.
Thank you, Chair, I certainly appreciate it. Obviously, ask questions if you have it. What this response, or what this little, it's just a 10-slide presentation, is really to answer your question. I'm going to pull my phone out just for a second, because I think there was an email from a constituent that all the board members received, I received as well, and I believe it's pretty reflective of a lot of complaints that we're hearing, or requests that we're all collectively hearing. And essentially, what the constituent said is they want a no machine, paper ballot, voter ID, no illegal alien, allowed to vote, one-day voting. And that's what they're really pressuring you. And again, there's lots of versions of that, but I'm assuming you received, just like I have, literally boatloads of those emails, something to that effect. And what I've been trying to express to the public is, you guys really can't do that, not as it's currently constituted. Ms. Lewis spoke yesterday, or spoke about yesterday, and our Secretary of State was present in our, actually, historic courthouse right here, just in the next room over, and he said, oh, the elections are yours, you guys get to control elections. He was talking a little bit about the EPM, not really what the statutory mandates are. So, when people say that the elections are yours, you have some really tight framework that you get to act within, but if you get outside of that framework, you potentially run the risk of legal repercussions. And that's really what I'm going to talk about, is those legal repercussions. If you were to honor the wishes of some of your constituents and say, we're only doing one-day voting, there will be no early voting, we will not accept it. I'm going to talk about what would happen. Or, like you're speaking of, Chair, if we said, we're just not canvassing this. I'm going to kind of get into what happens when that legally goes forward. Let's see. So, what's most important to remember is elections are a creature of statute. We don't get to just say, hey, this is the best way to do elections, we don't get to meet with our constituents and say, hey, Pinal County residents, how do you think elections should go forward? Instead, the Arizona revised statute actually completely lays all of that out for you, and it's found specifically in Title 16. So this is a lengthy, I mean, there's lots of words up on the screen, I can, it is publicly available, I want to compliment our clerk of the board, I always get stuff very late to her, she does a great job of integrating it. She does a great job of integrating it. She does a great job of getting up on the website. So anybody that's listening to this, anybody that's watching, this is going to be up on the website for quite some time as backup documentation, so you can see this, take the time to actually read it. But it's just, just talks real big picture. Elections, again, I used the analogy earlier, if you're bowling, you got gutters, and you have to stay within the lane. And that's, what creates that lane is a combination of our statutes and then what's called the EPM, or the Elections Procedural Manual. The Elections Procedure Manual is created by our attorney, excuse me, our Secretary of State, but our Attorney General and Governor have to end up signing off on it. So the law creates the framework. The EPM kind of gives you the details on how they should actually run. And based on the conversation we had yesterday, it sounds like the new EPM that's going to come out is going to be much lighter on policy and will give a little more discretion than some of the past EPMs have. Title 16 controls elections. It literally, it qualifies who may vote. It talks about how they can register. It provides the dates of elections. It explains, as candidates, we've all been candidates, all those silly things that we have to do, the forms that we have to fill out, the documents that we have to sign, the petitions, all of that is laid out specifically in Title 16. So for elections, that is sort of the Bible. And just, again, really big picture, our Arizona Revised Statutes are set up, there's like 43 different titles, I believe, and they're set up for different responsibilities. So criminal, where I spend most of my time, is Title 13. Elections has its own title, and that's Title 16. So if you're ever curious about elections, if the public is or anything else, Title 16 is where you're going to find that information. You can find it online, it's easy to find, Arizona Revised Statutes, Title 16. It'll be on a Google search, it'll be the very first link that'll pop up. So Title 16 is broken up into a series of articles. You'll see these articles on the right-hand side of the screen, just sort of general provisions, then election precincts and polling places, the voting equipment. Again, I know a lot of people want to go away from machines. All of those requirements are actually found in Article 4 of Title 16. There's a specific article just for the primary, another one for the general, talks about election boards, early voting, polling place procedures, tallies and returns, the official canvas, which I know is of great concern and importance to this board, also the process for recount. This last election, we went through a recount process. Everything is controlled by statute, and it's found specifically right there in Title 12. And then contest of elections. So if you were the unsuccessful candidate, but you believe there's something wrong, Article 13 controls how you litigate. So think of Mr. Hamada, think of Ms. Lake, who had a number of elections challenges. Those challenges filed Title 13. So what happens if you fail to comply with Title 16? Legislature wants to make sure that you run the elections the way they say you're supposed to run elections. And then what they do is they create significant penalties if you don't do exactly what they tell you to do. And those penalties are actually found in Chapter 7 of Title 16. So I'm going to go through some of the sort of bigger ones. So under 16-1004, interference with an election officer. If someone interferes with or induces an election officer, think the election director, to not comply with the law, they are guilty of a class-five felony. So let me tell you how that would work. If this board tells Ms. Rolle, as our Elections Director, that you shall not do something, and she listens to you, you've all committed a class-five felony in your personal capacity, and you likely would be charged criminally. Again, I don't make the laws up. Our state legislature makes the laws up, and this is the way that they are creating it. Now, when it was originally created, a lot of it was so she didn't get pressure from other outside sources, but it certainly applies to this board and anybody else that would compel her, force her, or otherwise try to interfere with her ability to do her job. For example, if you locked her out and said, "Nope, we think this election is so broken, we're changing the locks, and you are not allowed to go in and look at those ballots." You would be committing a class-five felony. I'll talk about at the very end what the, actually, I can tell you right now what the penalties for a class-five felony, just to put it in perspective. Class-five felony, the minimum prison sentence is, well, you could be put on probation for up to three years. If you went to prison, it's a minimum sentence of six months, could be as much as 30 months, and you could be fined as much as $276,000 each. So the consequences are potentially very grave. You would also be a convicted felon for the rest of your life as well. The next one is 109, and that's failure or refusal to perform a duty by an election officer. An officer who fails to perform a duty imposed under Title 16 is guilty of a class-three misdemeanor. Class-three misdemeanor is much less. You're looking at a max of 30 days in jail and about a $4,000 fine, all inclusive of taxes and, excuse me, fines and surcharges. Am I holding this round? So this is specifically applicable to the BOS and the canvas of elections. Under 16-642, that is the controlling statute canvases of elections, says the governing body shall canvass. There is one legal exception, and that is if there's a missing return from a polling place. So let me give you an example. Let's say, for whatever reason, Superior does not give us their results. You can delay canvas until you get those results. And there's actually statutory provision saying how long you can wait and what you can do if that happens. That is the only lawful statutory grounds for you to delay a canvas. There is no provision that allows the board to say, "I just don't think this is right. I'm not confident in these numbers. I think something hinky is up." It does not matter, this board does not have the lawful authority to not canvas.
And so one of the questions in the primary was, can we have a revote because we ran out of ballots? There were a lot of people that did not, weren't able to vote. Can we have a revote? And you said that the timeline was so strict that there would have been no way to possibly do a revote.
Correct. So which puts you in that terrible position where you would have to canvass. The only way a revote, and again, we've never had that. We've certainly never had in the state of Arizona. I'm not aware of it ever even happening in the U.S., but for that to happen, there would have to be judicial intervention. It would have to be somebody pursuant to that, Article 13 of Title 16, would have to bring forward an election challenge and say, "Hey, this is so screwed up that there needs to be a revote." But it couldn't be the board acting in its official capacity. It would have to be either a person who was deprived of the right to vote, or it would have to be a candidate who believes that they were harmed. But the board itself doesn't have the ability just to say, "Hey, our bad, redo it."
And some folks, some folks were deprived of the right to vote because they didn't have a ballot, and that actually happened. Could we have done just an additional vote instead of a complete revote? Give the folks who were denied a chance to vote? Now, the present Secretary of State took it upon himself in 2020 to just let people vote extra. He kept the polls open when he didn't necessarily have that authority. So there's an example of, could we have let anybody who did not have a ballot come back the next day and we'll have ballots? Why didn't we go that direction?
Chair, board, the short answer is no, we're not allowed to do that. In fact, there was litigation that occurred on the date of the primary where they specifically said, "Hey, we would like the polls to be extended even longer." If you recall, there was, I believe, just outside of Stanfield, there was a polling place that didn't open for about an hour and a half or two hours on the primary, late. You know, supposed to open at 7:00, didn't open until 9:00. There were a number of reasons why it occurred. And somebody actually came, and they filed a lawsuit in our Superior Court and specifically said, "Judge, we're asking you just to extend it for an extra two hours. Like, we lost two hours on the front end, we should get two hours on the back end." The court decided, "No, there's not lawful authority to do that." So there was the ability for the court. That was before the court. The court had the authority, arguably the authority. They said they didn't, but they would be the ones that would have the authority to say, "Hey, those need to be expanded." Because again, we're creatures of statute. This board is a creature of statute. Elections are creatures of statute. And what that means is we only have the authority that is explicitly given to us or that which is necessarily to be reasonably inferred to accomplish what we're obligated to do. So that falls outside the scope of this board. That would have to be something that a court would come in and say, "Hey, in the interest of fairness, there needs to be an expansion." That's not an authority that this board has to make on its own.
Okay. Yes, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to be clear on that, as I hear you explain that, really, it's only a judge that would have the authority to expand that or to rule in any capacity. Why did our judge say they didn't have that authority?
I don't have it in front of me. My recollection was that the people that initiated the lawsuit did not have an actual party who said, "I was unable to vote because of it." So it, my recollection was, if it had been a voter who said, "Hey, I'm asking you to extend it because I didn't get a chance to vote for whatever reason," the court may have reconsidered, but they said, "Look, there's not a truly aggrieved party. There's nobody that was harmed that was before the court saying, 'Hey, if you give me two hours, I can vote.'" Again, I don't have that in front of me, but that was my recollection. I'd ask Chris if he has any different recollection to correct me.
Well, that makes sense. I didn't think, well, I would, thought they would have brought somebody that had been harmed.
It was an organization that brought it forward and just said, "Hey." It was a watchdog, if you will, saying, "Hey, it's, we're just trying to have fair and open elections," and they brought forward, but they did not have, to my recollection, they complained.
They needed a person.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense now.
Anyone on the phone want to ask questions? Okay, continue on, Kent.
So with respect to the canvas, so again, we'll use Cochise County because they're an easy example. I'm not knocking them, but ultimately, they said, "Hey, we don't think this is right. We want to do an expanded hand count. We want to do an all-hand count. We are not going to canvas." If you don't canvas, 16-10-10 becomes applicable, and that is refusal by an election officer to perform a duty. So this statute, I actually have quoted verbatim, this is directly out of the Arizona Revised Statutes. "A person charged with performance of any duty under any law relating to elections who knowingly refuses to perform such duty or who in his official capacity knowingly acts in violation of any provision of such law is guilty of a class-six felony unless a different punishment for such act or omission is prescribed by law." If you recall, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors delayed their canvas, and then they had a later hearing, that was a public hearing. I did have the privilege to be able to watch it remotely, but I did watch it. And one of those board members, he's a former, a former state representative, I just don't remember his name, and I apologize to the gentleman, but he said, "I am voting "aye," but under protest, because I was told that I would be arrested, handcuffed, and sent to jail or something to that effect if I don't vote "aye." This is what they were talking about. If you recall, former county attorney Rick Romly, who was the Maricopa County attorney for the better part of 16 years, I believe, and came back as an interim. I think you had Terry Goddard, our former Arizona Attorney General. When Cochise County said, "We are not going to canvas," they started calling for their arrest, saying, "You need to arrest them. You have the lawful authority to arrest them. We have to enforce the law. Nobody's above the law." 16-10-10 is what they were talking about, because the board fits as a person charged with performance of any duty under any law relating to elections who knowingly refuses to perform such duty. That duty is the canvas, which is required in 16-642.
So who would enforce that? The Secretary of State doesn't have their own law enforcement powers. They can't see Pinal County sheriffs arresting us.
Chair, board members, the way it works is, I can't prosecute my own clients. You are my clients. But there is a provision in the law that allows me to reach out to a fellow elected county attorney in a different jurisdiction, and they can come and stand in my shoes. So what would happen is I would call, for example, maybe Brad Beauchamp, who is in Hila County, or I would call Rachel Mitchell, or I would call another county attorney personally and say, "Hey, I can't even look into it. I can't make a determination. This is the allegation. You investigate." The AG would have concurrent jurisdiction as well. So either a different county attorney that I have given my authority to, or the Arizona Attorney General had the authority to actually prosecute under this.
Which would get very convoluted, obviously, you know, having Maricopa County come over here and arrest us would be strange. So Mr. McClure just reminded me that you're up against the clock, so probably give you a chance to tie it all together.
Yep, I want to finish this. I'll drive fast. Don't pull me over, Mark. Reasonable and prudent the entire time, though, in this. This is something else that I think the board does need to be aware of. Under Article 8 of Title 38, which governs public officials, under 38-341, there is a process in which either a county attorney or anybody else can actually make a presentation to a grand jury, and they present an accusation to be filed against any, quote, "county officer for willful misconduct." And then under 38-343, which is just two sections down, specifically Subpart C, it states that the penalty for conviction of 38-341 is removal from office. So what that means is, not only could you be arrested under the previous, under 16-10-10, be convicted of a felony, potentially face prison time, again, the penalties for a class-six felony, minimum four months, maximum 24 months if you don't get probation, and another $267,000 fine. So not only would you be subject to potentially arrest, you know, perp-walked, put into the jail, the whole ball of wax, you also, there's a very specific process where you would be removed from office, and that is found, again, in Title 38 in the 300 series. And all they have to prove is that there was a willful misconduct. Again, willful misconduct would be if you failed to canvas as you were statutorily required to do. You not doing it would be a willful misconduct. That willful misconduct would result in your removal from office. The other thing, and this is really an aside, oh, yes?
May I interrupt real quick? Can you, do you have the legal definition of canvas right there?
The legal definition of, say that again, I'm sorry?
Canvas.
I don't have it in front, it's under Title 16. I do not have it in front of me. I apologize. I had lots of prep, but I wasn't prepared for that one. The other thing that I would point out is, if you recall, Cochise County is just, it's the easiest example. There were citizens and residents who came forward and sued the county and said, "Look, you have an obligation." There's actually a provision in our codes to allow a special action to say, "Hey, the board or a government actor has an obligation to do something. They're failing to do it, particularly in elections." So there was a provision of the, of our, again, be our civil rules, that allows them to sue. They brought a suit, the court, and it was actually a conflicting judge to the question you asked. They brought a judge out of, I believe, Pima County. I think it was Judge McGinley, I believe, I think it was Casey McGinley, who came and actually heard it, and he said, "Board, do it, or I'm going to throw you in jail. Like, you don't have a choice to canvas. This is not within your discretion. The statutes are absolutely clear. You are obligated legally to canvas, and if you don't do it, I'm going to hold you in contempt of court, and you're going to stay in jail until you either comply with it, or..." I don't even know what happens at that point. They could just, I guess in theory, sit indefinitely because he'd have to create a purge amount. Because it went to lawsuit, there's also a provision in Arizona Revised Statutes that allows the prevailing party to recoup their legal fees. So the county had to hire their own legal counsel, because again, their county attorney told them, "Hey, guys, you have to canvas. You can't do this." And they said, "We're not going to." So he said, "Then you're going to have to get your own counsel." So they went and got outside counsel. I think they had two different outside counsels. And then the group that litigated the case against them hired outside counsel, and the county ultimately ended up paying another $86,393 out of county coffers to reimburse the legal fees for the party opponents, the people who said, "Hey, you don't have any choice but to canvas." So that's the other thing that happens, is ultimately, you're going to be forced to do what the statute tells you to say if the laws don't change, and if you don't do it, you're going to be compelled, you're going to be threatened with jail, you're going to be potentially prosecuted, but you're also going to cost county taxpayers dollars, because the court really has very little discretion in awarding these legal fees when a private party moves against the government and the government is found to have acted wrongly. Just real quick summary, board has little authority and even less discretion on how elections are truly administered. Again, the idea that you can go to one day, that you can do one vote, that you can require IDs, all of those things, that's not within your authority as the law currently is created. Now, to your point, Chair, if the law were to change, if legislature were to open things up, that would change potentially what authority and what discretion you have. But as it's currently constituted, you are really, you're a caretaker and nothing more. I don't mean to disrespect this board, but that's really all you are, is you're just, you're doing what they tell you to do, within the lines they tell you to do it. There's not much room for your personal opinion, or your collective opinion, or what you believe is right, or what your constituents even believe is right. I'm not telling you that that's a good thing. I'm not telling you it's right. I'm not defending it. I'm telling you that's the state of the law.
We can just hoe the weeds.
Yes, and be paid minimum wage for it. Again, state legislature's created this legal framework. They've created significant penalties if you don't do exactly what they say. So they say, "This is what you need to do, and if you don't do it, you're going to get, you're going to get in trouble. You're going to potentially have a felony on your record. Your ability to ever possess or own a gun is going to be compromised. Your ability to, your freedom, your very liberty is going to be taken from you. And not only that, we're going to take your job from you, too." And then really, the bottom line is, you just don't get to administer elections as you see fit. Instead, you're obligated to merely follow the law. And that's really where it's at until our legislature collectively changes things. Otherwise, we are, we're just doing their bidding.
We have a lot of responsibility and no authority. That's probably the best way to describe it.
I wouldn't disagree with that assessment.
It's just an observation.
It's just an observation.
Is there any further questions from the board? I know we've got two board members on.
I don't think so, I still don't think there would be anyone that could physically arrest us. You can't send sheriff from another county into another county, but that's just an argument there. I don't think State Highway Patrol could come, because the sheriff could possibly not, but we could be removed from office.
As your legal counsel, I would not advise, the reality is, you're not going to be arrested, the reality is, you would be summoned into court. They would send something in the mail saying that you've been charged with the crime, and you need to show up to court on this date at this time. They're not going to perp-walk you, not for these type of offenses, you're really not supposed to do it, it's really only if you're deemed to be a danger to the public. You're not a danger to the public, this is merely a compliance issue, so the real framework would be, you'd receive a certified piece of mail saying, "You have a court date set at this date and this time," that's practically.
And so far, we've been so far away from ever getting to that point, we're just, we're doing a what-if it really got out of hand, then you would want that authority, and so hopefully, the legislature listens to this conversation, even though they have their own lawyers and their own advisors. So, thank you for staying late, and have fun.
Thank you, board. Everybody take care, be safe.
Drive safely.
Any further discussion on that issue before we go back to the first issue? I think we do, it was all laid out right there, so it still doesn't sit right in our crawls, but it looks like it's up to, if the counties need protection, they need it from the state legislature. We can't do it ourselves, so.
That's what I've said for years.
Yep. So Jerry, thank you for rescheduling your time there, and now let's get back to what we can do.
Good morning, Chairman Searcy, members of the board, Jerry Rowe, Elections Director. I think the question that you guys are entertaining is, where do we go from here? What should the organization of the Elections Department be in terms, in relation to the Recorder's Office? And I, that little, yeah. We thought we would just give you a really quick, short, brief presentation of the ballot-by-mail process. You know, the Recorder's Office has three primary functions in addition to a whole host of other recording duties, but in terms of voter elections, there are voter registration, ballots by mail. So a voter requests a ballot by mail, and I don't know, Dana, if you want to come up and join me?
Sure, let's do this as a team.
The voter, absolutely. The voter requests a ballot by mail, and they get put on the active early voting list. The ballots are mailed 27 days before the election.
Forty-five for you, Akava.
Right, and so, the Recorder's Office is managing that voter registration role all year long and creating that active early voting list, and then she is the one, the Elections Department orders her ballots.
But you have to request a ballot, correct? You just don't, we don't just blindly send them out to every voter.
You are correct, sir.
Because that was happening in Maricopa County, the current Secretary of State was going to send out 200,000 ballots, and they had to stop him with an injunction to, "Do not send those ballots out." That was, just throwing that out there, so.
For clarity?
Yes.
If you, permanent mail, you put in, what do they call it, pebble?
It is now called the Active Early Voting List. What had previously been, once you signed up for the permanent early voting list, you were on it forever. Now, in the event that you do not actively use your ballot for two general election cycles, you are then put into an inactive status, and we're going to stop sending you an early ballot by mail. The way to remove yourself is to go to the polls, or to sign back up.
And that's present legislation that's saying, if you do one election, you don't do it, then you're removed from the role. That's what the new legislation, they're trying to push there now.
But of course, any of those folks could still go to the polls and vote.
Absolutely.
Regardless, yes.
Are they purged at that point, after two elections? They're not purged, they're just, they're just not going to receive their ballot in the mail?
So if you've been in an NVRA status, where we've sent you official election mail, and you have not, after two general election cycles, have not contacted us to confirm that you still who you are, who you are, and that you are residing at that address, then we're able to purge you.
So if they're on the inactive status, that's different than the NVRA?
Yeah, that is correct. Inactive status means, I'm not going to send you a ballot in the mail.
But you can still show up on the inactive status at the polls and vote. So I think the only way you can get on the active early voting list is by requesting to be on there.
And I have to have a wet signature.
So, that is the list that is used to determine how many early ballots we need, the Elections Department orders those, and then we transfer those to the Recorder's Office with a proper chain of custody. Voters have three options to return their voted ballot, they can place them in the mail, our recommendation is no later than seven days before Election Day. So any ballot received by 7:00 PM on Election Day through the US Post Office is counted. They can deposit at any ballot drop box, or they can drop it at the polling place. Currently, we still have that in effect, and I believe, I don't know if you agree or not, but I think that's going to continue in effect.
I will not state my opinion on that.
To be clear, you say, early ballots received no later than 7:00 PM on Election Day through the Postal Service are counted. What happens to those that are received at 7:01?
So we currently have a really great relationship with the United States Postal Service and the mail carriers here. Either a mail carrier has the ability to enter a polling location in uniform with credentials and say that they are an official, you know, member of the United States Postal Service, and able to drop off ballots at a polling place, or we also make pretty great strides to go out to our posts in Florence and in Coolidge, to, after 5:00 PM, they stay, they wait to see if anything comes in from their carriers, and then we go there and we obtain them from the postal service at that. Anything that comes in after the fact unfortunately is not counted.
So currently, there is legislation wanting to not, to end dropping, being able to drop off an early ballot. I think that we're probably still going to be able to drop ballots on Election Day at polling places. There may be some different requirements, they may want to try to, to speed that process up, is to do some verification at the polling place, so that ballots, early ballots that are dropped, if you show ID, then those ballots can be categorized as ready to be tabulated. They don't have to go through signature verification.
They would be, would they be, what's your term, slit? Would they be opened and dropped into the ballot box, or would they just be dropped in and say, "Yeah, these are okay"?
I think our preference is probably to leave them in their envelopes, rather than having people at polling places opening ballots.
That's the complication in current legislation, that election officials and recorders are trying to help our state lawmakers write better legislation, so they can understand our process, what it looks like to do a chain of custody and ballot audit at the polling location, what it looks like back at central tabulation. Everybody's processes are a little bit different, and our ability to be able to talk through our process effectively and help educate them is where we're at right now.
So, after the early ballots have been received by the Recorder's Office, she, I think has, Dana has explained to you in detail the signature verification process that they go through, once they are verified, they are batched up, and then they are transferred by a ballot transfer to the Elections Department, and we do another verification, we make sure that we have received all of the trays that they said they transferred to us, all of the batches that they said they transferred to us, and we check against a reconciliation sheet to be sure that we received every affidavit that they have listed that they sent to us. And if we don't match, we stop at that point and try and figure out what was wrong.
To jump ahead in your presentation just a little, we had no problem with the batches and the counts of the early ballots, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
It was, it was an after of fact.
It was the day of ballots that had the issue.
Well, when we talked about the ballistics earlier.
We'll talk about that later, but that's, but just to be clear, that we didn't have an issue with the early ballots when they were tabulating.
No, when it came to that, no, we were holding.
Okay, thank you.
So, once they ping them, on the recorder side, their voter history is updated that indicates that their ballot has been received.
Would you please tell the audience what pinging is?
So, we have scanner systems next to the Avid Systems, and what happens is, every ballot has, on its affidavit envelope, has a unique label and barcode, and that is the ballot identification for that said voter, and so that is for the affidavit, that is not for whatever's inside there, so we can't tie that ballot to that person, so it's, again, ensuring anonymity of that vote. And what that scanner sounds like when it is activated is ping, so we call them pingers, we call it, signature verification is the pinging process.
Okay, can we move on to the next slide? Thank you. I don't know how to use it, thank you. So, early voting in-person process, this is again, something that is controlled by the Recorder's Office. So you can, you receive your early ballot in the mail, and you don't want to put it in the mail, and you want to either vote it in person, or you want to drop it off. So you arrive at an early voting site, those are all of the Recorder's Offices and the Recorder's Office and the Satellite Offices. The voter checks in with the Recorder's Office, they show them their ID. If they did not bring their early ballot with them, because they can do that, too, they will receive the proper, the correct ballot, what is that, what's it called? Ballot style. They get the correct ballot style, ballot affidavit and envelope, they have an early voting location, so that they can, with voting booths set up, they can go in and vote their ballot, properly seal it, and then they drop it in a locked ballot box that's in the office, they get their "I voted" sticker. Those early ballots also that are received by 7:00 PM on Election Day are transferred over to, I don't believe they have to go through signature verification at that point.
So this is where statute is a little bit cloudy. We, as recorders across the state, had what we considered was a best practice, somebody walks into a vote early in person, they have to present identification, because that's how we bring them up in the Avid system. And when they present identification, we've just validated that that voter is a current voter in our system and has the ability to cast that vote. So we've done that, we've already vetted the identification. We then retrieve the ballot style that is attributed to where they vote, they vote that ballot, it is put in that affidavit envelope. Current statute says that we're supposed to verify that identity, again, by that signature. Well, we've already done that. So there is legislation right now to clean up that language, so we don't have to do that again, we take one of those steps out of the process, making it a bit more concise. They then put it in the affidavit, they've signed it, we put it in the affixed ballot drop box. We've already vetted those, so all we do at the end of the day is then a recon. So instead of them having to go through the pinging section, all of the recorders are certified election officials as well, so that has already been recon and goes directly to tabulation all over at the Elections Department.
Just, I was waiting for you to get a breath, because I know that you go, so, and when you say ballot style, because people are listening, so, would you just quickly define ballot style, and how many we had?
You know, I don't even, oh.
Three hundred and eighty or something like?
Three hundred and eighty.
Yeah, three hundred and eighty ballot styles, and so the ballot styles reflect the races that are on the ballot. So the way the precincts are drawn, they have varying voting jurisdictions within them, so you will have a ballot style that, if you are living in the city of Casa Grande, then you should have all of the city of Casa Grande races on it, you should have all of the Casa Grande Union High School, Casa Grande Elementary School District races, or measures or questions on it. But if you're outside of the city of Casa Grande, you may still be within the jurisdiction of the Union High School, or the Elementary School District, or some other jurisdiction, and you're a different ballot style, because you don't get to vote in the Casa Grande.
On the municipal issues, yes.
On the municipal issues. So your ballot style reflects the races that, by your precinct, and what jurisdictions include your precinct, your ballot style reflects that.
And just for clarity, too, the three hundred and eighty something is divided by Democrat, Republican, Libertarian, is that correct? So it's not like, oh my gosh, it's three, it's really a hundred and something, but it's the three different parties multiplier.
That's for the primary election, yes.
And now it'll be, that'll be clouded with the fourth party.
I can hardly wait, next slide.
Just real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to comment, I have to tell you that when I explain that to groups or people in a discussion, that there's three hundred and eighty different types of ballots, it brings a hush to the crowd, because they do not really think, really, or understand all the complexity of all of that. So, on an education point, I really think that's something we really need to get out to the public, you know, in strength, so they really do understand how difficult that is, designing all these ballots.
Yeah, the design of the ballots is very, it's complex. And what you do is, you create a matrix for all of those ballot styles and all of those races. It took us a week to vote that entire matrix, to mark every race, and to vote that matrix to make sure that we had included every race in every proper precinct, and every candidate and every question was included. It is very complex.
Yeah, and you have precincts that are split, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't simplify things.
Yeah, depending on precinct, precinct parts, that's what the splits are. The primary election has the different party, political party affiliations on them, and the general does not, so generals tend to be a little bit less in numbers than a primary election.
I think a general is easier than a primary.
I would agree, I would agree.
A primary just adds another layer of complexity. And right, if we're going to have three parties with ballots, or four parties with ballots.
I think a member of your staff wants to do some input, is that?
Oh, I just wanted to add about ballot style numbers.
Come up, identify yourself for the record.
I wanted just to add that actual ballot style numbers is, for the primary, it was nine hundred and thirty-seven ballot style, and with the addition of the new party, that's going to go to well, over 1,200 ballot styles, so it's going to become more complex, that's all.
Thank you.
This is, Gordon, could you tell them your name?
Oh, my name is Goran Petkovic, election specialist.
Thank you, Gordon.
I don't have a vault big enough for 1,200 ballot styles.
You will.
We're going to build a better box.
Okay, the polling place ballot process, we have designated polling places, we vote by precincts, and that does add a burden to our voters. They must, in order to vote on Election Day, they must show up at their precinct, at their assigned precinct. If they don't, they need to be redirected, or if they insist, they're going to cast a provisional ballot, it's not cast in the right precinct, and precinct voting, base voting just does not permit that vote to be counted. So you arrive at your polling place, you have your ID.
So, here again, I hate to speak about other counties, but on their actual Election Day, they were saying they couldn't vote here, they just took off driving to other precincts to vote, and they were allowed to do that, right?
Their ballot on demand, rather than precinct based.
They're also central.
So, here's the phone call that I got from a lady who said, "I showed up at my precinct, and what I believed to be my precinct, and they said, 'You're out of precinct, your vote's not going to count.'" And she says, "You know, I heard on the radio that I could go anywhere and vote, and so I went there, and why couldn't I vote?"
Because that was Maricopa County doing that.
Right, so our messaging comes from Maricopa County, we don't have Pinnell County messaging, and so our voters on the fringe of Maricopa County are hearing that message, and when you hear it, you're hearing Maricopa votes, or whatever their little slogan is, you're just hearing, "You can show up anywhere, anytime today, and vote." And it just doesn't work that way for a Pinnell County voter.
Yeah, so Chairman, members of the board, so when we talk about the communications, we have an amazing public information officer and a huge communications team in Pinnell County. We just came off of redistricting in Pinnell County, and so there is definitely confusion. I remember at the primary, I showed up at my polling place, precinct 22, and a gentleman who'd been voting there for eight years said, "Well, this is where I've always voted." And I said, "So this thing called redistricting occurred, and so you really need to be going to the funeral home in the center of Casa Grande, because that's your new polling location." So, you know, explaining to him how to get to Heritage, and was able to redirect him. But it is, it's a communication, and it's also a responsibility of the voter, to be following up with that information, and making sure they understand, on Election Day, they have a plan, they know where they need to go. It is unfortunate that Pinnell County doesn't have our own radio station, and we're not just getting Pinnell County news. We are receiving news from the Maricopas and the Pimas, and it does say, they are a vote center basis, where we are a precinct-based model. So they do hear that, that they can go anywhere. And when they show up late in the day, and they don't feel like they have enough time to get to their polling location, it does create a ruffle some feathers.
It does, and we will have issues in the upcoming elections. As you know, we use fewer polling places for the presidential preference, and the Florence Unified School District has asked us to not return, so we will have at least six new polling place locations, plus we have several that were getting too small, or not big enough for the voters that were showing up there. So we're going to have some changes in polling places, that's really traumatic. I mean, because I know, I'm used to just driving to the, twenty years, I go to the same place. So I'm going to understand every voter that shows up at the place they showed up for twenty years, and they didn't, you know, they didn't read their mail, or they didn't read an email, or they didn't pay attention, didn't look at their voter ID card, oh, it's not on there, is the polling place on there?
Polling place is not, but it is on their sample ballot and all of their election information that they're receiving.
We're going to have some voters that show up and go, "What?" It's very difficult to message to our Pinnell County voters.
So I heard you say that you're going to the funeral home to vote? I mean, it's like Chicago. It's like Chicago, right, you know, just saying.
For me, Mr. Chairman.
So, I brought a poll pad, if anybody wants to see, we have loaded them all up, and they are checking driver's licenses, as they should, they're doing their job as they should. Your driver's license in a perfect world gets put on the poll pad, it registers with the poll pad, it's scanned, it brings the voter up, they know what ballot style with the poll pad, it's scanned, it brings the voter up, they know what ballot style that they're supposed to get. They print up a receipt, they mark you in as you're checked in, and that is essentially updating, not until it gets uploaded to Avid, but it is updating your voter history and it's saying you voted at that point when you got that receipt. Then you take that receipt to a ballot judge, they give you the proper ballot style, you're directed to a voting booth, you vote, walk back up to that manned ballot box, and slide your ballot in. Those ballot boxes are picked up at the end of the night, the, the equipment that we return back to the Elections Department are the poll pads, the express votes, and the ballot boxes. Those all come back to elections, they're checked in. We get all of the early ballots, provisional ballots, any surrendered ballots, or spoiled ballots. Those all come in, those are separated and counted and accounted for. The early ballots will be batched and through a ballot transfer, sent over to the recorder. If, depending on, and they may have to still go through signature verification, or if we change, if the law changes, they may not. Some may not have to go through signature verification. The ballot boxes are going to go through an audit board. An audit board will have, the program that runs the poll pads is called ePulse, and so the audit, audit team will have, ePulse, they will be able to take the ballot report that will tell us how many ballots were received at the polling place, how many ballots were unused at the end of the night. That will tell us how many ballots were used at that polling place. I just want to know how many ballots you spoiled. The, we will be issuing all voters who are voting provisionally, a ticket also off of the poll pad. So all of the voters that checked in will be categorized as either provisional, or just regular voters, check-ins. So you will be able to tell from the ballot report how many check-ins you had and how many ballots should be in that ballot box. Provisional ballots are not in the ballot box. They can confirm or verify the information on the ballot, official ballot report that's filled out by the inspectors against ePulse, and determine what number of ballots should be in that box. That box goes into central count for tabulation. We are anticipating using staff, trained, full-time staff, to tabulate. These people will be, they, we have been training. We have run thousands of ballots, we will continue to train. They will understand how these machines absolutely work. We're also planning on having ESNS come in and do some additional training on the software, as well as the, the tabulators. Those guys, when they run those ballots, if they don't match that ballot report, the process stops, stops, that batch is deleted, that ballot box comes out, and we try to figure out, where's the difference? If the ballot report says you have three hundred ballots in here, and you want to tell me there's only a hundred and twenty, we're not going to go any further until we figure out why. ePulse said there were three hundred people who voted, the ballot report says they used three hundred ballots, and your machine is no longer telling me that I have three hundred ballots in here.
Steve, did you have a question a bit ago?
Well, I said, it was back to the polling places, because the lack of polling places, or fewer places, where now we're having to combine precincts. So your precinct may not be the place that you've been voting for years, has been moved over to someplace else, because we have multiple precincts in, in the polling places.
That's correct. Sorry, jury, so those would be co-located, and so when we talked, yeah, so, and when we talk about what that looks like going forward with the presidential preference election, because there's typically a reduction of voters that are going to turn out because they're partisan-based, statute requires that we minimize to fifty percent of our polling locations for that. So the communication that needs to occur for the presidential preference election is stout. It, it is absolutely stout. But during the previous elections, we did. We co-located several due to the loss of historical polling locations.
And co-located precincts present issues, because that's difficult to count.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, the machine can count it all together and drop it into the proper buckets, precinct one and precinct two. But we, on election night, you are usually counting, you've got your machine programmed to count by precinct, so you select the precinct, and it counts. If you've got a co-located one, it spits out all the ones that belong to the other precinct, and then, and then it also spits out some other ballots that need to be adjudicated. So you have to sift through them. And I think that's what created some of our issues on election night in this general, because we had a few errors in the co-loc, well, there were three co-located precincts that were not counted correctly.
So, could you, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, the desire to have a polling place at your facility is, people aren't really anxious to do that any longer.
I know.
You know, it used to be pretty easy to, to make those arrangements, but fewer and fewer locations want to have anything to do with it, so. I mean, we have challenges all the way down the line.
I'm sorry. So, to solve that, the spitting, I know how the machines do their thing, but could you, at co-located polling places, could you have a, a ballot box for precinct A, B, and C, I mean, your three different boxes, so that it doesn't have to have that issue?
You absolutely.
Now, the problem there, of course, is somebody has to actually pay attention to what it goes, but I would think you would have possibly fewer issues.
You absolutely can have a co-located precinct and then just set up two different election boards, so that, oh, you're precinct twenty-two, you go to this table, you're precinct ninety-seven, you go over here, and they have their ballot boxes. You absolutely can do that. That's one option. The other option is to, to count the co-located precincts at the end of election night, reset the machines, so that it just, it, it just counts them, like early ballots. It'll run them all, it's not going to separate them out by precinct, because the machine has the capacity to put it into the proper precinct buckets. If I count ninety-seven and thirteen together, and just run them all together and don't have them sort by precinct, it will count every one of those, and yet, and still put it in thirteen and ninety-seven.
So, we're into year three of this latest census, 2020. 2030 will be another census, takes a year or two to tabulate. You, you guys see what we approved for the population influx in the Santan Valley, every meeting almost. Seven or eight more years, the population, you're talking tens of thousands of more people down there. Are they going to just be super precincts, or will they, can we split in between? How, how's that, how's that going to look? And maybe Mr. Goodman wants to weigh in on that with the massive growth down there? Or what do you guys think?
I think that Santan Valley is going to be huge, and you're going to have a, you're going to be doing a lot of redistricting after your next, after your next census.
But that's seven, eight years.
Precincts haven't, but precincts.
There you go. So, per statute, every October, in an odd year, we are able to reprecinct in the county. And so obviously, with the growth that we saw from the 2020 general presidential election to just the 2022 midterm election year, we saw a thirty percent growth just in two years. So to look at that going into 2024, and how we need to have the boots-on-the-ground effort, need to be forward-thinking with our growth, with our facilities, with our people, I, I think we're already laying that foundation right now, and so knowing that that's the direction we're going in. And so trying to be ahead of the curve in identifying what our polling locations need to look like, and still be ADA compliant.
And the DR Horton, it's not even built yet, there's not even a building there, they would then have to, they're, they're not even going to have a homes precinct, because it's a completely new area. That's a.
But we just added six precincts this last census.
That's during redistricting.
So, we'll add ten or fifteen more. I mean, that, because it's, it's by numbers, because there's a formula for that, is that not correct? And you can explain the formula for that, roughly?
I can't, I can't explain it. I'm sorry, I don't know what it is.
You can't? So it's something like, it's something like you shouldn't stand in line more than thirty minutes?
That's what it requires.
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know, they, I don't know, we don't have a penalty if you're standing in line for more than thirty minutes, but that is.
But that's the rule of thumb of how they do that, and how many people, how many mail-in ballots you have as opposed to how many walk-in ballots you have, and if you walked in, that you didn't stand in line for more than thirty minutes, more or less, that that would determine how large your precinct is. Is that kind of the rule of thumb?
It is.
Very generally.
Very, very generally. I mean, they, they, they want you to have a precinct where you're not going to have a turnout where they're going to be waiting over thirty, thirty minutes, or an hour in the line. But there's nothing that, there's no hard and fast rule.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Back to, back to your question, I, I thought I heard that we're, we're limited on the amount of times that we can actually redistrict. Did I hear that correctly? Or how often we need to?
So, Chairman, Supervisor Goodman, what statute, or what occurs, is after a census, we are required to redistrict in accordance with the changes in congressional and legislative lines. We just went through that in the 2021, after that census. It does occur every ten years. However, every odd year in October, by October first, the Board of Supervisors and work with the Elections Director will identify the need for reprecincting of the county. So what that means is, because of where the polling locations are, where there is potential growth, where a new area has popped up, like you're talking with this DR Horton, that we can build a new precinct to accommodate that voter base, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I just want a clarification on that, because it sounded like we had even more of a limit than what you're saying. So that's, that's good, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I might ask the Board of Supervisors, when these developments are coming into place then, make sure they have those common spaces that we might be able to utilize as a polling location.
That, that's true. Direct that to Mr. Leo Lu.
It is tough. Pinnell County doesn't have a great deal of public space. And so, there are, you know, fire stations are hardened facilities, that they're reluctant to have us there, that is a compromise to their operations. Schools are expressing more and more concern about having adults mingling with their children. Churches have some limitations, and when they want you to drop your stuff off, they, they present a number of issues, and, well, they're not obstacles, but they're just things you have to deal with.
So we should do it like the Halloween store.
A pop-up?
Yeah.
I know, I, I, I think I will, I will be looking for some commercial space for a few of our polling locations.
Mr. Goodman, you're trying to get in there?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, maybe a suggestion, and I don't know what the flexibility there is, but many of these HOAs have clubhouses, or things that, the community centers that they have, that we might be able to utilize, and a lot of those HOAs.
And, and you know, we do use the HOA community centers in Saddle Brook, and we are reaching out to several of them as a result of the loss of the Florence polling locations. But they all have to go before their board, right? And we're on private property. There are a number of issues for them that they take into consideration. So we, we certainly are reaching out to them.
I'm, I'm seeing some questions from the audience. Unfortunately, in this kind of format, we can't really take them right now. So feel free to approach these two, or any of us afterwards, if you have any questions that you'd like answered.
So, with this schedule, Chairman Surti, members of the board, Dana Lewis, recorder, so with this, the only part that's really not broke out that, you know, we did just, I guess momentarily did speak about, is the fact that the early ballots, at a polling location, you're going to see three boxes, as we shall call them, the black, the brown, and the blue. The blue is the official ballot box that the live ballots on polling or on election day are cast and placed into. The brown are the early ballots that are dropped off by voters on election day. Those will go back to Election Central, then be counted out, and then those need to be transferred by chain of custody over back to the recorder's office, and of course, the black bag for the provisional ballots. So when you are at a polling location, you can identify, you know, which bucket your stuff needs to go into. So what happens, though, on the last election, the general election, we received from ballot drop boxes and the polls, twenty thousand early ballots. So when we talk about results and wanting them fast and whatnot, those are the ones that still need to go through signature verification under current statute. So when we talk about moving those dates and, and creating, you know, a wedge there, or a line in the sand, that's what we were talking about with current legislation.
So to, to come back to the beginning, where, where are we going and what should it look like? I think that Supervisor Miller has had experience with the, the way the recorder has, the way the recorder and elections have been composed over the course of time, that is a decision that this board makes. I think that the recorder and the Elections Department have no choice but to collaborate and cooperate with one another. They will always, whether they are under one roof, or whether they are separate, they will always have to, there, there are certain functions, certainly, we are, elections is, we tabulate, we count the votes. We are, that's what we're about. We have a few other recording duties, unlike the recorder who has a whole other set of, of responsibilities and duties. But we do have a piece that we must always work together on. We, we have to be on the same page, we have to be communicating, and we have to know what works, what, what we are trying to do, or what Dana Lewis might be trying to do, and whether it works for each other.
So I want to hear from the other supervisors, but I would think what we'd do now is what you just stated, we need to work together. So I would encourage you to get together with county manager, share your ideas on how, whose jurisdiction, whose responsibility, and how do we merge the two to utmost efficiency? And how, and then we'll, then we'll meet again in a, I don't know, a few months. Like I said, we're almost on 2024, so we don't have a whole lot of time.
And Chairman, we have an election in November of 2023.
Okay, so.
No one's returned an IGA.
Oh, they haven't? Okay. So there is a good, strong possibility we could be having an election in November of 2023. So that board, that, that puts, you know, we're coming out of an election going full steam ahead into the PPE.
So, Leo, how would you like input on that, and to, do we stand pat, or do we somehow tweak this a little?
I think that we can get together as a team, as we're, we're really doing it right now anyways, as we're syncing up on all the work process flows. And the facility and the design of that facility has helped us to do that, because we really had to go through and look into detail how the information and the passing flows. We'll continue to do that from an operational standpoint, but from an organizational standpoint, on what structure may work better or not. I think we, we can give, we can do a lot of brainstorming and creativity with that, and see what we can come up with. The reality is, Maricopa County is doing that as well, and they're probably going to be updating the way their agreement looks like with their recorder's office. We can do the same, and then we can come to you with recommendations, or we can come to you with just information and kind of visuals that will help you brainstorm as well, and, and kind of weigh the pros and cons. A lot of this, these kind of things also have to do with circumstances. Thankfully, we have two highly professional collaborative people that work together well, and it's, and it's working out really nicely. Sometimes people aren't always working together so nicely. And, and so different circumstances, I think, call for, for different kinds of tweaks and organizational structures. But for what we have now and what we're facing, and the point that we're at, if you want, we can come back to you with just pros and cons and different ideas, and see what you think, and, and give us guidance.
Does everyone agree we just leave that up to the manager to get that onto agenda? Steve?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, for me, a visual really helps. How much of this overlaps? I mean, you, you both have stuff that you do have to interact with. How big is it? How much is it? Is there duplication? Is there opportunity, excuse me, to streamline it? But, yeah, I think we're at that point right now, and probably building that building was really a good place to start, because then you can, you can really get a visual of what's going on there, so. That's, for me, that's what I, that's what I need.
And Supervisor Miller, to your point, they've, they've been together in the design.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and flow check, you know, how it goes, how it flows, what doors need to be where, and where we shut it off, where we divide it, and where we join it. It's been a lot of great collaboration.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, do you have any input?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Goodman?
I'm, I'm riding with everybody else, so that sounds good to me.
So Leo, just, when you're ready, we'll have another work session, and if, this is probably something we don't need to have a vote on, it would just be organizational through the county manager's office. But do let us know what, what you've got planned.
And I, and I just do want to point out, what may look like duplication in the elections process actually is part of the audit process and verification.
No, I understand, yeah.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for, for all the input. I mean, in, in an hour and a half, that was an, in, information overload on, of all that. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move, that we move to an executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going into executive session.
Return to the regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we're back into regular session. Any discussion on whatever it's called, health benefits increase?
So Chairman Sertie, Angie Woods, I'm the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance here at the county. The item before you today is to ask for discussion approval or disapproval of funding for the Pinnell County Health Benefit Trust Increase in fiscal year 2324 to promote consistency, a consistent county contribution among all plans within the legal limits of the system. We are asking for approval because contributions that are consistent between these plans will promote employee choice of which plans that they choose. The cost will mainly fall to the employer. The employer, the county, will incur about a million and a half additional dollars of expenses due to the rising cost of the plan. And as explained before, there, because of the system constraints and the legal constraints, there will be slight increases to some plans for employees. However, the employee will be able to choose a plan that best suits their financial situation.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This promotes equity across the board. This is, the issue we're having is that we get inequitable situations.
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor McClure, absolutely. So this will equalize, or each employee will have the choice to choose a plan at the same rate per tier across the entire plan. Any other questions?
Yes, Steve?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I really appreciate and like the fact that we're able to have kind of, for lack of a better word, a cafeteria approach to it, have options for our employees. Everybody's family situation is probably different, so options are good. And I really appreciate the effort here.
Thank you.
If no further discussion, are we ready for a vote and a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item number three as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And that is the end of our work session.